You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting, the March 12th meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order at 8:03 PM. Will now all rise for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. Toohill, would you please call the roll?
Representative Adams. Representative Edelman.
Here.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Present and now accounted for.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Hines.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keefe.
Absent.
Representative Leach.
Here.
Representative Larson.
Present.
Representative LaFredo.
Here.
Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
Representative McCormick.
Here.
Representative Nuppani.
Here.
Representative Papalizio.
Absent.
Representative Sharkey.
Here.
Representative Shrestha.
Here.
Representative Sumro.
Here.
Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Verderam.
Here.
And Representative Waterman.
Here.
Also, the ex officios, we have Lisa Arpin, the town clerk. Also, I've been asked to make this announcement from BCTV. So these mics that we have on the tables are only for amplification in the room. When you go to speak, please pick up the handheld mics, though that audio goes into the camera, you know, for BCTV. Thank you.
I think it's reversed. It's the opposite. It's the opposite. Yes. Sorry. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Toohill.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Frank.
You have a call.
Okay. Item four, approval of the minutes of February 12th, 2025, meeting of the RTM. Do I have a motion for approval? Motion to approve.
Director.
And we have a second. That was Representative McCormick. Any additions or corrections? Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, the minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A little bit of housekeeping. I am recovering. I am no longer radioactive, but I don't have much of a voice, so I've asked Representative Everson occasionally to read some of the long lists of numbers, so I don't run out of voice completely. I hope you don't mind. Okay, item number five, I have, I am not in receipt of any letters or reports or petitions. Representative Toohill, have you received anything?
I have not.
Representative Everson, okay. Representative Verderam, okay. We will move on then to item six. To consider and if appropriate, recommend a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal '25 as follows. From the fund balance, $481,516 to contingency, $481,516. This was heard by Ways and, and there is a resolution below it, but we'd have Ways and Means speak to this. Representative Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before we actually look at that particular item on the agenda, I circulated to the RTM today the one memo that the Finance Director, Jim Finch, provided to us for our meeting, talking about fund balances overall, because there's a lot of fund balance movement that's happening tonight and in the future. And so the question has always been, how much do we have in the fund? And what are we using it for? Thank you. So in general, if we look at this memo, which again, everyone should have that authority, at the end of last June, on a pro forma basis, we had $53.6 million, again, the Undesignated Fund. Through various activities in the Board of Finance two weeks ago, and then you'll see tonight, $9.1 million will be moved out of the Undesignated Fund and used as appropriation. In addition, the Board of Finance did something I haven't seen before, which I think was very interesting. They assigned money to support various potential things down the road. I think we can look at that as kind of a statement by the Board of Finance, that the money is there if needed. And some of that's for the Blackstone Library, there's some medical things, engineering. The big assignment with that was $3 million in case federal funding for education is somehow diminished. I think that the total number that we might be seeing, if everything went away, there's more than $7 million at the town level, but that's not likely to happen. Finch thinks that in addition, we would be getting more money from the state. So in addition, what they're doing is they're saying, if there's a need, there's $3 million that could be used there. So the total of that assignment area, which is again, not an appropriation, but is more like a statement of support, was about $6.1 million. And in addition, there's some money that's moving in from the Medical and Self-Insurance Fund, which we're not using anymore because we're using the state medical program. So at the end of the day, if all of these things come to pass, including the assignments, which again are sort of a promissory note if necessary, the Undesignated Fund would stand around $47 million. So that's, I think, something that we all should be aware of and keep in mind as we move forward, because a bunch of season's about to begin now. So in terms of this first agenda item, number six here, to take $481,516 from the fund balance and put it into contingency, and this is an appropriation used to supplement the contingency account to cover retroactive wages. And this was discussed in my committee, and it was approved 5 to nothing, and so I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Would you care to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolved, that the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriation for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $135,311,96 to $135,792,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be used to supplement the contingency account to cover retroactive wages.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion through the committee. Are there comments or questions from the RTM members? Do we have, do we have any public? No, no public, okay. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor of this resolution and this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries. Thank you very much. To review a report from the Finance Director discussing actions to consider in advance of the budget hearings and to act on the following items as outlined in the report. There are three major items. We'll take one at a time. The first is, is item A, general fund changes. From the fund balance, $475,000 to transfer out Police Technology Fund for $475,000. To transfer in from the general fund, the same amount, to technology acquisitions for an equivalent amount of $475,000. And there is a resolution. I'll ask Representative Hartwell to give the committee report on this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the resolution is that the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $135,792,612 to $136,297,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be used to establish a Police Technology Fund. Mr. Finch spent some time talking with us about various pieces of the technology needs for the Police Department. A lot of it has to do with cameras, associated technology that is being used now, or which will be needed in the future. We wanted to establish this Police Technology Fund, and so we talked about that and we approved it 5 to nothing.
Okay. And there is a resolution? Maybe I'll ask for questions or comments before we read the resolution.
He read it.
I just did.
Oh, you read it? Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry. Okay. Are there any questions or comments for this committee report, for Representative Hartwell or the committee, on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll hear, have a vote. All in favor of this transfer of $475,000? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Item B of number seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve or transfer in resolution to supplement the Board of Education Lease Fund for School Technology, from fund balance $250,000 to transfer out into the Board of Education Lease Fund for $250,000. Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So there are various pieces in the Board of Education Technology Needs, for example, laptops, Chromebooks, those sorts of things. There's a Finance Director presented to us a series of potential needs for those programs, and what he was asking for now was the $250,000 to take now to the fund balance, the Undesignated Fund, and transfer it into the Board of Education Lease Fund. And again, that was talked about in the committee and approved 5 to nothing. Would you like me to read the resolution?
I think so, yes. Serious talking to you.
That the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriation for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $135,792,612 to $136,267,612. This increase--
I am sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah. At the bottom of the page. Yes.
That the result, that the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $136,267,612 to $136,517,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be used to increase the contribution to the Lease Fund for Board of Education Devices, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a motion through the committee. Do we have any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, hearing none. We'll have a vote. All in favor of this transfer of $250,000 out of fund balance into the Lease Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Item 7C, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer in resolution to supplement the Coastal Resiliency Fund. Out of fund balance, $750,000 into the Coastal Resiliency Fund for the equivalent amount, $750,000. Mr. Hartwell, once again.
Thank you. So again, we had a good discussion about the Coastal Resiliency Fund and the need for this in an era of increased concern around various pieces of the town that could be affected by global warming and increased pollution. So again, this was approved by the committee, sent 5 to nothing, and the resolution was that the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $136,000, I'm sorry, $136,517,612 to $137,267,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be used to supplement the Coastal Resiliency Fund. Again, we approved this 5 to nothing, and I will put this in the form of a motion.
Representative Black.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I should have noticed this earlier, but on the agenda, this is that the RTM consider, the language of all these resolutions should be that the RTM approves an increase rather than we consider. What we've done is just cock and haste a resolution.
No, it was changed. No. It was changed and approved by the Board of Finance.
Pardon?
It was, this was submitted, it was changed from the original Board of Finance language.
Right. The Board of Finance recommends to us--
Right.
--and then we do the approving.
That's right. That's what it says.
No, it's saying that we consider and if appropriate--
Approve.
It should be just that we approve. I mean, this is a resolution from the Board of Finance asking us to consider it, and now we're the final body, so it should be simply approved. Okay, thank you.
Representative Henshaw, do you have any concerns with witnesses for--
For, just for information's sake, I did have Finance Director Finch review this before I submitted it, and I had changed it from the original, but--
I know. It's been done this way before, and I've noticed the error, but I didn't notice it this time.
Mary and Representative Adams. Yes, Representative Adams.
Thanks, Madam Moderator. I just want to say how delighted I am to see this, this use of what we call the contingency funds or the undesignated funds, or whatever the language is that Finance Director has educated us on. And I think it addresses some of the concerns that we all raised last year when we were looking at the amount of undesignated funds, and we were looking ahead to natural disasters and changes that could befall our town. So I'm just really, I'm proud, I'm proud of this, to see this come forward as a prophylactic, you know, looking ahead. Thanks.
Okay, are there other questions or comments or concerns? Representative Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to clarify one thing in terms of the strategy of the Coastal Resilience Fund. I mean, every year, we put in the budget an increase of a little over $300,000 to build up that fund, you know, year by year. This year, we have the $750,000 that we're putting in now, preloading it, and in addition, my understanding is that the budget, this year's budget, will still have that $300,000 increase, so it will be a little over a million this year. However, Jim Finch's strategy is to then drop down on a dropping scale for the next couple of years, the amount contributed to a lower amount than the $300,000, so that over, he's done an outline, scheduled over 10 years, so that at the end of the 10-year period, the total amount contributed, including this $750,000, will be equal to the same thing if the 300 had been just done every year, year by year. It averages out, but by front-loading it, basically, we're getting, we're putting more money into it earlier, we get more interest, et cetera, into the fund. But there is, we are compensating for it in future years to a certain extent. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Other questions or concerns, comments on this transfer? Okay, we've read the, the resolution, yes? So hearing no more comments or questions, we will have a vote. All in favor of approving this transfer into the Coastal Resiliency Fund for $750,000? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following resolutions and transfers using reserves to reduce liabilities and to smooth out costs that experience a high level of volatility. From the Police Pension Fund and Medical Insurance Fund, the fund balance, $8,500,000 to transfer into the General Fund for an equivalent amount, and then into, then out of, oh, is this one at a time, right? This is yours, Representative Hartwell? Then we'll take the first one first, or are they-- Are they all part of the same, same thing? Okay. And then, general fund transfer to increase the pension contribution from the fund balance, $6,500,000 to retirement for the police. $6,500,000. Would you take that up, Mr. Hartwell?
Sure, thank you. So we spent a good bit of time on this one, and I think that everyone agrees that putting $6.5 million more into the Police Pension Fund is a good idea. The more we fund it now, the less we have to put forward later, and we also take advantage of whatever kinds of transfer we can get going forward. So putting money into the police fund is a good idea. Taking money from the Medical Self-Insurance Fund is no longer necessary there, because I think we're using the state's program for insuring the people who work for the town. So there was $8.5 million taken from the fund and transferred into a general fund, but then of that, only $6.5 million is going into the police fund. So then there was another assignment that they worked on for a million dollars that's not part of this. So the net result is a $6.5 million appropriation. So resolved that the RTM consider and appropriate approve an increase in appropriations from $137,267,612 to $143,767,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be used to supplement the Police Pension Fund. So that's the $6.5 million that we're talking about. And we approved it 5 to nothing.
All right. We have a committee report for approval. Are there questions, comments for Ways and Means on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of approving this transfer out of fund balance, $8,500,000, transferring into the General Fund and then transferring it into the Retirement Fund for the police, $6,500,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the item carries. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following proposed bond resolution. The full text of this resolution is, is on file in the town clerk's office. We have a vote to waive the reading of the full resolution. Have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Black, we have a second over here? Okay. All in favor of waiving the reading of the full resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the reading is waived.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, thank you very much.
To receive communications with respect to and consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing an Appropriation of $5.3 Million for the Fire Equipment Project and the Financing of Said Appropriation by the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of the Town and Notes in Anticipation of Such Bonds in an Amount Not to Exceed $5.3 Million", therefore, and again, the full text of the resolution is on file, opened to public inspection in the office of the town clerk.
Okay. Mr. Edelman.
Hi, thank you, Madam Moderator. Unlike some of Representative Hartwell's agenda items, Admin Service did not spend a whole lot of time on this. This is a simple transfer to--
Excuse me. We're on, we're on the resolution--
We're on the resolution.
--the bonding resolution for the firefight, fire apparatus. You're skipping ahead. Mr. Hartwell needs the microphone.
That's why I was surprised. Back to, back to John.
I'm on his way.
Mr. Hartwell. It's yours.
So again, the, the resolution was for approving a bonding potential. It doesn't mean necessarily that they're going to go bonding anytime soon, but there's an extreme lead time on producing, purchasing new equipment, two, three years many times, and so for the fire department to go out and be able to negotiate what they need, they need to back up that there is money on the table when they need it. So that's what the bonding resolution is for. It doesn't mean that they're going to go to bond immediately, in fact, they absolutely will not, but this allows the fire department to go and negotiate for the equipment that they, that they need, and they've got a full plan for that. So in the committee, the first thing we did was also waive the requirement to read the entire resolution, and then we approved it 5 to nothing.
Okay. We have a committee approval for this obligation, this bonding issue. Are there any questions or comments regarding this bond? Representative Brooks.
I would just like to, I'm not getting a mic. You can all hear me? I would just like to point out that we are indeed basically approving the purchase of fire apparatus tonight. We will not come back, they will not come back after they negotiate and ask to purchase a piece of equipment. This bond will, is authorizing that purchase. I'm not objecting to it. I just want to point that out. They may not use the bond.
Right.
They have the ability to purchase equipment not, well-- not exceeding borrowing $5,300,000.
Representative Henshaw.
Just to point out further that there is a possibility, if the town decided in the future that they wanted to pay for that fire apparatus using some other source, then they would have to come back to us. So this, this is approving their ability to bond it, but if they wanted to expend some other fund or, you know, have a general fund or whatever pay for it, then I think they would have to come back to us for approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions or comments on this bonding resolution?
Yes. Roll call vote.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any other comments or questions before we have the vote? None? Okay, we've got a roll call there. Mr. Toohill?
Representative Adams.
Aye.
Representative Edelman.
Aye.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Amore.
I don't vote.
That's right, sorry. Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Black.
Yes.
Representative Bonnenberger. Representative Bonnberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Yes.
Representative Leach.
Yes.
Representative Larson.
Yes.
Representative LaFredo.
Yes.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative McCormick.
Yes.
Representative Nuppani.
Yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Shrestha.
Yes.
Representative Sumro.
Yes.
Representative Toohill, yes. Representative Verderen.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
Motion passes, the bonding passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a unanimous approval. Okay, I'm going to hand some of the obligations of number 10 over to Representative Everson to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Director of Human Resources pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement for the police union contract and the dispatchers contract for fiscal '25 as follows.
General Fund Transfer from Contingency, $1,124,507, going to wages and salaries, police and dispatch, $555,369. Overtime, $46,864. Public Events, $7,660. Vacation, $17,763. Holiday Pay, $20,933. Sick Pay, $10,104. Retroactive Wages, $457,134. Accrued Payroll Expense, $8,680, for a total of $1,124,507.
No, Representative Edelman.
This was heard by Admin Services on March 4. This is just fairly simple. It's money put forth by contingency to fund a contract that was negotiated through the collective bargaining agreement by the police union and dispatchers that negotiated as one department. That contract was already approved by both Admin Services and the RTM, and this is simple money is being transferred to fund it. The retroactivity is because the contractor, the contract was after the expiration of the old contract, of course, and before the approval of this contract. So, I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the, we have a committee report as a motion. Are there questions or comments for the committee on this transfer? Do I see a hand?
Here's the mic.
Oh.
Hi, Representative McCormick. Representative Edelman, you said that it was approved by the Administrative Services and the RTM. Did you mean the Administrative Services and Board of Finance?
I think the contract itself came to the RTM.
Okay, my mistake, thank you.
Absolutes.
Goes back.
Goes back to Dan.
It goes back to Dan? Okay. Oh, I thought you had something to say.
No, no.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions or comments on this transfer for the Admin Services Committee? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Item 11 has a few corrections. I was notified by the Town Clerk right before the meeting that some of the numbers are incorrect, so we will read them out. Representative Everson will read the numbers. To consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Director of Human Resources pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement for the water treatment union contract for fiscal '25 as follows.
General Fund Transfer Contingency, the agenda reads $77,272. We'll have to make a motion, I believe, to amend that. So, it reads $77,232.
And every place that $77,272 shows up, it should be $77,232.
Point of order, please, Miss Moderator. My understanding from finance is that the transfer numbers, the froms and the twos and the increases are correct. So, $77,272 is accurate, but in the, in the resolution, the $4,879,501 and the $4,956,733 are not accurate.
Oh, okay.
They're off by $40.
Okay, all right. That was something different that came in the email then. Okay, what should it say?
It was stated in the email.
What should it say? What are the numbers?
I don't have the numbers.
Okay.
It's $4,956,773. Instead of $733, it should be $773.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Madam Moderator?
Yeah.
So, that's the only change? Representative Anderson?
It looks like just a math error.
Okay, so I just want to go over this again to make sure it's correct.
Okay.
So, the only change we're making tonight is to change in the resolution, or in the resolve language, the number 4956 to 773. That's the only change? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, the agenda is correct.
Okay.
General Fund Transfer Contingency, $77,272. To transfer out Sewer Utility Fund, $77,272. Corresponding Sewer Utility Fund Transfer and Resolution, increase operating fund transfer in, $77,272. Increase wages and salaries, $44,827. Overtime, $7,891. Retroactive wages, $24,382. Accrued payroll expense, $172, for a total of $77,272. That resolve that the RTM consider and if appropriate approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal year 2025 sewer utility budget from $4,879,501 to $4,956. Correction, 773. The agenda states 733. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from contingency and will be used to fund salary changes pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement for the wastewater treatment employees' union.
Point of procedure. So, we have now on the floor, Representative Everson, she made the motion to change that number, so, you know, we should, you know, I mean, she-
She will rescind the motion.
Yeah.
Would you rescind your motion to change this number? I don't even think we got to a motion.
We didn't get to a-
We didn't get to a motion.
She said she moved, so.
Oh, okay. To change these numbers.
Yeah, I did say that, but we were, yeah.
Just rescind it.
I rescind my prior correction and substituted for this one.
The, the, okay.
Right?
Yeah, substituted to change $4,956,732 to $4,956,773.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Who seconded that, please?
Nancy.
Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have an amended resolution which has been approved. Do we have any questions or comments about the resolution itself, I mean, the transfer itself and the resolution for the committee? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The transfer, the item carries. Okay, thanks very much. All right, item 12, to consider and if appropriate approve an additional appropriation request from the Board of Education for $300,000 to address a projected deficit in special education out of district tuition costs.
Point of, sorry, Madam Moderator, point of procedure, we didn't have a committee report on that.
Yeah, we didn't.
We-
We did not have a committee report.
Oh, so, we didn't.
That's good, you picked that up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was unaware.
You did good.
Also heard by Admin Services on March 4. Again, this was heard by Admin Services on March 4, and similar to the last item, this is just monies that are being funded for already approved collective bargaining agreement that went through the Admin Services previously for the contract itself and the RTM, and it's just the transfer of monies to pay for the costs associated with that contract. And on March 4 of 2025, it passed unanimously, but Admin Services by a seven to nothing vote.
Do we have to vote again because we didn't have a motion functionally?
She sort of forth-
Yeah, all right, all in favor. We will have, we will now vote on the committee report. All in favor of this transfer?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the item carries again. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, let's see. To consider and if appropriate approve an additional appropriation request from the Board of Education for $300,000 to address a projected deficit in special education out of district tuition costs. Special Education Fund, $300,000 into Board of Ed non-personnel, $300,000. This was heard by the Education Committee, Representative Leach.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, this request is driven by special ed out of district tuition costs, as it says, which continue to rise. The Ed Committee heard this item this past Monday and passed the request for an additional $300,000 unanimously, five to zero. So, I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a committee report as a motion to pass this resolution. Any questions or comments, pass this transfer, any questions or comments? Yes, Representative?
Through you, Madam Moderator, to Representative Leach. I was just wondering, is this related to the bill that was just passed in the legislature regarding the increase in special education funding for districts around the state? No, I don't think it's impacted. But, I mean, we are expecting to get funds back from the state, so that it may be related to that. I mean, the expectation is that we will have more money coming to us, but for right now, to, in order to cover the special expenses, and the out-of-district tuitions just keep rising.
Yes, I think.
Because we pay for not only the tuitions, but the transportation.
Representative Toohill.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I believe at the Education Committee meeting, it was stated by the superintendent and also the CFO, who was on the phone, that, that there was an additional grant to the town in Branford from the state for this account, and I believe the, the number was 169. Yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments for the committee? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of this transfer?
We need to read the resolution.
Oh, that's right. Would you read the resolution?
Sure. Resolve that the RTM consider and if appropriate approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget from $143,767,612 to $144,676,12. This increase will be funded through increased estimated revenue derived from excess cost reimbursements.
Okay. Hearing the full resolution, we have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is approved. Item 13, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Board of Education to reallocate capital projects. Representative Everson, do you want to take that one, take this?
Sure. Parking lot paving, from steel coating at Mary Murphy, $95,000, going to parking lot paving at Mary Murphy, $95,000. At Indian Neck School, from the Indian Neck School boiler replacement, $35,000. And school facilities vehicle, $5,675, for a total of $40,675. To Indian Neck Campus Safety Security Update, $40,675. Branford High School Tennis Court Seating, from door replacements at Branford High School, $50,000. To Branford High School Tennis Court Seating, $50,000.
Would you read the resolution too, so we can have a total?
Sure. Resolve that the RTM consider and if appropriate approve a reallocation of Board of Education capital projects totaling $185 million, oops, I'm sorry, $185,675 in fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Representative Leach?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. So, yes, the Education Committee heard this request to reallocate the capital projects this past Monday. The item is not controversial in any way in past committee unanimously, but to zero, so I put this in the form of a motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for Representative Leach or the committee on this transfer of capital funds, these transfers? Okay, hearing none, we'll hold a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the transfers are approved and carried. Thank you. Representative Henshaw, to consider and if appropriate create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22A through 113K. Would you speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Rules and Ordinances Committee met on February 18th. All members were present. This item was discussed again, and we voted unanimously to request a re-referral to our next meeting. Before I vote on that, I would say that the next meeting is Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. Look for the agenda, because I may decide to hold this as a virtual meeting on Zoom rather than in person, so that we can go over the details of these ordinances with better scrutiny. So, before you show up here, check the agenda and make sure that it's not online. So, I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion to re-refer item 14 to rules and ordinances. Do I have a second? Oh, this is a, this is a committee report, never mind. Okay, any questions on this matter or comments? Okay, we'll have a vote then. All in favor of the re-referral of item 14 to rules and ordinances, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is re-referred. Remain standing, Representative Henshaw. Now, item 15, to consider and if appropriate create an ordinance which will encode reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. Representative Henshaw?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, the committee met on February 18th. This item was discussed, an outline of the key elements of this ordinance was reviewed by the committee line by line and straw-voted on to make sure that we were moving ahead in the right direction. We need to do further work to start to encode this in actual ordinance language. So, the item was re-referred unanimously, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee to re-refer this item for consideration at their next meeting. Do we have any questions or comments on this request for re-referral? Okay, yes.
Again, from any public people listening to this meeting, check the agenda before you come to the meeting if you want to participate, because it may be online.
Thank you very much. Okay, all in favor of re-referring item 15 to rules and ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is re-referred. One more time, Mr. Henshaw, to consider and if appropriate, consider the establishment of a pedestrian slash bicycle committee as, as recommended in the Branford POCD adopted in 2029. in 2019.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, the committee met on February 18th to discuss this matter. The primary focus of discussion was the fact that most committees that are established in Branford have been established through the Board of Selectmen rather than by ordinance. There are two committees that have actually been established by ordinance. Only one of those is actually currently in operation. So we discussed the pros and cons of having the First Selectman try to move this forward through the Board of Selectmen versus using the rules and ordinance to create an ordinance and shrining it. And we agreed that the, we created a subgroup, a working group, and we agreed to meet with the First Selectman and just discuss further his feelings about those two different options before we move forward with it. So with that, we decided to vote on re-referral of this item also unanimously. I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments for the committee or Mr. Henschel on this request for re-referral?
Vote.
Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor of re-referring item 16 to rules and ordinances, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries, the matter is re-referred. Item 17, any other business to come before the RTM?
My lover?
Yes. Representative Ingraham.
Thank you. Bob, announcing that the American, well, American Legion is having a pancake fundraiser coming up on Saturday, March 22nd, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. If you want to, want me to cook for you? I'll be taking care of the pancakes and all. This is a fundraiser to help us with our mechanicals in the building. Remember several months ago, we improved monies out of our, for the exterior of the building. While we were doing that, we had a furnace fail. We have two furnaces. The other furnace is same age, so we're expecting it to have, to last in its life also and some air conditioning issues. So this fundraiser is going toward that end. Thank you.
Can you just state time, date, place?
Saturday, March 22nd.
At the hall.
8:00 to 11:00 a.m. And if you're on social media, you know you'll get hit by me once or twice between now and then.
And it's at the American Legion?
At the American Legion on ordination. Thank you.
Representative Henschel.
Is there a forum where donations can be made? I'll come to, I'll re-forward it out to all the nation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Representative Ingraham. Representative Waterman.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Moderator. We've had a constituent from District 1 reach out who's a veteran, who's having issues with a large rent increase, and we were made aware of the fact that two years ago, the RTM had agreed to an ordinance, so passed an ordinance requiring establishment of a fair rent commission. This is also state law that, to have this commission. And as far as we're aware, there, this commission has not, is not currently in operation, so it would be helpful if we could get an update on the status of this, this commission and how, you know, so that we can have recourse for our constituent. So, thanks.
Okay. Yes. We don't have the First Selectman here, so it will be in the minutes and hopefully will be reflected on, will direct it towards the First Selectman.
Good. Thank you.
Other business to be brought up tonight for, yes, Representative Brooks?
So we heard from Representative Hartwell tonight about $3 million being earmarked for the education side of the budget because there could be some issues with the federal government paying what we have been taxed for. So I just want to point out to all of us here and all of you out in TV land that the current administration potentially is going to cost us, the taxpayers, five, the equivalent of 5% of the education budget that we will have to now cover. So just my little soapbox. I'll get down now. Thank you.
Point of clarification, the current, which administration are you referring to?
Sorry, the federal administration.
Thank you very much. Okay. So noted. Every single day. Okay. Any other comments or questions or business to be brought before the RTM? Yes. Representative Nuppani.
So once again, Society of Nepalese in America is hosting a holy festival, holy event in Branford Green on March 15th from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. So we play with colors. Anybody who wants, who loves to get out in this weather, play with color, are all invited. Join us. Have fun.
And where, where will it be?
It's in Branford Green.
On the green?
Yes.
Say the date and time again.
So it's March 15th in Branford Green from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay. Very good. A holy celebration. Very good. Always fun.
How permanent are the colors?
No, it's just a powder.
Yeah.
It's always a fun, holy celebration, so.
They're trying to bring some color in the town.
Good. Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
We need some brightness today. Okay. Have we, have we done it? Okay. Any other business? Any other business? Nope. All right. Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 8:59 p.m.